Okay, Paul noting that Neil's there, it's just his microphone's not, doesn't look like it's being activated at the moment. Would you like to proceed with that assumption that he can hear?
Um, yeah, he just sent a message saying that he can't turn it on.
Have the team reach out to him to see if they can assist with the connection.
All right, um, yeah, thanks, Dave. And how many people do we have on?
So we have a total of thirty-eight participants who are currently tuned in. So five of those, well, thirty-nine now, so five of those are commissioners. And the rest are either some secretariat staff and then observers.
All right, um, so I thought for today what we would do is hear from the secretariat. We would then have the opportunity for commissioners to ask questions and provide any direction as needed. And as well for folks that are online that would like to ask questions, we will have a, because I don't think it's on the agenda, Dave, as far as allowing other participants to ask questions. But we will come to that after commissioners have had an opportunity to ask questions and provide direction. And then we'll take questions from others.
Right, yeah, we can certainly activate any of the microphones. And so when we do get to that point in time, and you indicated that you're willing to take questions, we just ask that anybody who's online who has a question, just to raise your hand. And the software will put you in order, and then we'll just be able to go through one by one and take those questions. Thanks, Chair.
All right, um, then I think, John, do you have any other or any opening comments that you wanted to make?
No, I don't. Appreciate everybody's time in organizing this and look forward to the discussion. Thanks.
All right, thanks, John. Then Dave, I'll turn it back to you.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair. And so the agenda itself is pretty straightforward. We only have the one paper that we're going to consider. We do have a couple of information papers that are available that we may or may not refer to. But the primary aim here is just to walk through Paper Three. And Paper Three outlines a proposed FIS design for 2025 with a number of other options, as well as sort of talking about what a long-term FIS optimal FIS design might look like. Now unfortunately, Dr. Webster has had a death in the family and he's not able to join us today. But Dr. Hicks has stepped into the fore and he's going to present the quantitative analyses that Dr. Webster has undertaken as part of this paper. And then we'll also speak to some of the financial side of things as well. And so with that said, I'm going to pass to Dr. Hicks. And if we could have the presentation for Paper Three brought up, please.
Oh, you are. Great. Well, good morning, commissioners, and happy to be presenting to you this morning about the FIS designs and some of the quantitative work that has gone into this work. I may not be an author, but I am very familiar with the work that has been done and have been helping out as much as I can along the way. So I'll answer the questions as best as I can. So a little bit of background to this special session first. At the work meeting in September of this year, the commission provided a number of directives. And one of those directives with some subparts was aimed at the Fishery Independent Set Line Survey, or the FIS, design. And so the commission noted that there were basically three designs sort of on the table at that point, you know, being presented. And this was called a base block, a core block, and a reduced core design. And there are some modular add-on options. So the commission wanted a little bit more presentation on this. And there's four different parts that we'll be presenting to you today. Those parts are labeled A, B, C, and D. The first part, A, will be a section just describing the optimal five-year rotational FIS design and its associated costs and revenue. This is really just looking at the scientific components of it and what are the costs to that. B will be looking at a fiscally viable FIS design for 2025 and highlighting those different parts of that. And then C, and then it'll have some modular option add-ons that will be presented as well and the costs of those. C, I think we'll turn over to Dr. Wilson to talk about other sources of funding. And then D will have a little discussion on the potential biases that may result from the designs described above. And that'll be a description of some of the quantitative work that the Quantitative Sciences Branch here at IPHC has done. So a little bit of background on the FIS before we get started on these. It's important to note, the FIS is really our most important source of data on Pacific Halibut. And it has been for many, many years. It's a great survey and something that everyone should be very proud of. It provides data for estimating the weight and numbers per unit effort. So how many halibut are out there, the density of halibut, which is used in the stock assessment to estimate the stock trends. It's used to estimate stock distribution, which is often a management input into the decision-making process at the annual meeting. And so it really is an important input to both the stock assessment, but it's important input, I believe, to stakeholders as well. We had a little discussion the last two days at the MSAT meeting about the importance of the FIS to not only a stock assessment, but to understanding the Pacific Halibut population across the convention area. It provides a lot of biological data, age data, weight data. We've been using it to collect maturity observations and fecundity now even. So it's a great platform to collect a lot of important information about Pacific Halibut. And this survey is, in its current sort of design, has been undertaken since 1993. I do note there's been many surveys by IPHC before then as well. But this consistent survey design has been undertaken since 1993, although it's been expanded across those years. So currently, there's what we call the full FIS grid. And this is the full grid of stations across the entire convention area and throughout all the IPHC regulatory areas. And there's currently 1,890 stations, which could be sampled every year. This is a ten-by-ten nautical mile grid, so these are fixed stations. And I think, as many of you know, is just trying to survey all of these stations in a given year is pretty much logistically and financially impossible. So that's why we're here today to discuss how can we rationalize or optimize these designs while taking into account the costs associated with it and still getting the great data that we need from the survey. I want to point out on this too, all the yellow dots are the IPHC FIS stations. But the red triangle shown in the Bering Sea, the eastern and northern Bering Seas, are TRAL surveys that contribute to the estimates of abundance as well. And this is mainly the NOAA TRAL survey, although ADF and G also has some observations to be used in the survey. We integrate into the analysis as well. So there's some collaboration there, and the TRAL surveys operate on an annual basis in those red triangles. And may not survey all of those red triangles, but survey a fair portion of them every year. Okay, so as I mentioned, there are finite survey resources. And surveying all of those stations is challenging, logistically and financially. So we have to prioritize sampling effort. And this is prioritized, one, by scientific needs. And that's really getting, you know, we desire precise estimates of the index of abundance, stock distribution, age composition. And we really strive for low potential for bias. That's really important. We want to avoid the bias, and the survey's been operating very well in the past with low variability. But what this means is it does require more frequent sampling in areas with higher variability. And those areas are often areas where there may not be a lot of Pacific Halibut or may not be revenue positive. So another priority in the design process is long-term revenue neutrality. And so keeping in mind the scientific needs, we present a number of designs that try to take into account the long-term revenue neutrality or trying to keep it revenue positive. Basically, the FIS is offsetting the cost of sampling. And so what that means is often we have to increase effort in revenue-positive areas to offset the cost of sampling in low-density areas that might be more costly to get to. Or we can, and/or, we can reduce effort in high-cost areas to avoid any large deficits. So there's sort of two, two points of view here and two levers we can play with. One, increasing areas where we can make money, to put it bluntly, and reducing effort in areas where we lose money. Okay, so this is a table often presented of the three priority, the primary, secondary, and tertiary priorities. I've presented the primary and secondary to you already, being sampling the Pacific Halibut and then long-term revenue neutrality. And it's important to note, there's a tertiary priority here, and that's minimizing removals of the stock due to the FIS and also assisting other organizations and collaborating where feasible on a cost-recovery basis. And that might be collecting data for other agencies, whether that's rockfish or Pacific cod sampling, for example. And we often have, you know, we're out there on the water with this platform, so why not collaborate? Every once in a while, in this tertiary priority as well, is there will be some ad hoc decisions of the commission regarding the FIS design. There might be a desire to go out to a certain area, for example, and just make sure that we're surveying that area. Or, you know, things like that that can come in on an ad hoc basis. And may not be necessary for the first two priorities, but are a good idea to do. Okay, so that's a little bit of background. I think many of you have heard that before. And I want to jump now into Part A of the commission directive. And just feel free to raise your hand anytime with questions. I'll pause at the end of each one of these parts and see if there are any questions. But let's jump into it. At the work meeting, a base block design was presented to commissioners. And this is a design that prioritizes annual sampling in each biological region for stock-assessment purposes. So the real goal of this is to make sure there's some sampling in each of the four biological regions. It ensures all charter regions in the core of the stock are sampled over a three-year period. So we're not sampling every charter region, that's the sub-areas within the IPHC regulatory areas. We're not sampling those every year, but over a three-year period, they all would be sampled within the core area. And that really helps reduce the bias and make sure we're looking at all the different areas and seeing what's going on. The coverage in these outside, non-core, other areas, whatever you want to call them, is prioritized to minimize the potential for bias and maintain coefficients of variation, or CVs, which is a synonym for variability, below 25%. So that's a common number used for fishery surveys, that you just want to be below that value. So basically, to achieve this, you have charter regions, which we call blocks, and those are rotated over time. You're not sampling every one every year, but eventually you will get to all of them. It's projected to maintain precise estimates. And by doing this rotation, you're really sampling, within a five-year period, you've sampled nearly all of the charter regions throughout the convention area. And that's really the idea of this. So let's show you some examples of how this would work over the next five years, 2025 in the top left to 2029 in the bottom right. And you can just look at these plots and just look at the colors where the gold color are the stations that would be sampled in that year. The purple colors are stations, IPHC stations, that would not be sampled in that year. And then the red triangles are the expected TRAL survey stations supplementing the analysis for a calculation of WPU. And what you can see in, say, 2025 is, let's see if I can get a pointer up here. There we go. In this year, you have some, there we go. We have some areas out here on the edge of 4A and 3B. And then these designs are sort of optimized in a way to keep these blocks sort of close together across regulatory areas as well. But then if you look in the next year, 2026, those areas are not surveyed and new areas within those regulatory areas are surveyed. And so that's the idea of this rotating design. In the non-core areas like 4B, you may have a year where there's very little sampling out on the edge there. And then you go to another area of it in that year. So again, rotation of these, this is the optimal design. And we'll take a look at what the costs are of these designs, at least in 2025. So here is a table. I'm going to present a number of tables that look like this. So I'll walk you through this one. These are projected costs and revenue for the 2025 base block design you saw on the previous page. And that was, you know, really a design focused on precise estimates of Pacific Halibut across all biological regions. We have at the top row the total projected costs. And this would be about $3.8 million, and that includes the base headquarter costs, the vessel costs, the field staff costs, so staffing the samplers on those vessels, and then the cost of the bait for all the hooks going out. The next line is the total projected revenue. And this includes the revenue from Pacific Halibut sales, as well as any revenue from by-product, by-catch sales as well. And we note that there's no bid inflation on this, so we're assuming the bids are similar to what they would come in in 2024. We do assume that there's a 5% decline in landings, which is consistent with the current trends in the stock assessment. We also assume there's no change in the average price we receive. So you can see through those assumptions, there is expected to be quite a bit of uncertainty in the projected revenue. So there's actually in all of these costs. So when we take the costs, subtract out the projected revenue, we get the net cost of this. And that is, is here in this design, would be a negative net revenue of about $2 million. So it costs an additional $2 million to fund this survey for this design. And again, I know there's some uncertainty around that number, but this is an estimate, the best estimate that we could come up with at this time. So the conclusion here is this really is not fiscally possible without a large influx of supplementary funds, about $2 million. That's okay. We have very smart people here at the IPHC that can figure out ways to reduce those costs and still maintain a very good survey for indexing that Pacific Halibut stock. So I want to pause there for just one moment, see if there's any questions. That's the end of Part A, is presenting the base block design and then the projected costs and revenue for 2025.
Yeah, Paul, can you, can you see the hands raised, or would you like me just to pass?
Excuse me, I don't see any hands raised at this point.
Okay, so it's just.
Peter does.
Yes.
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. On field staff, just a couple of questions. I know other surveys that are run, they use independent contractors or like they use a company. Just curious on, is it a cost-saving? Is it a specific training thing? Why the IPHC uses its own field staff? Thank you.
Yeah, so I have some FIS experts in the room with me, Kayla Ullman, Tyler Jack. And I think for those types of questions, it might be best to turn it over to them.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. To my knowledge, I mean, the idea of using a contract company hasn't really been considered. I'm familiar with that idea for like observing and other surveys as well. I wouldn't be entirely confident in answering like cost differences between the two. Yeah.
If I can chime in as well, I think if we're just looking at the cost difference between, for example, an equivalent observer program and getting an external company to come in and send higher people to fill that set-line survey specialist field role. We essentially operate in that vein as well. The set-line survey specialists that we hire are on short-term contracts. We do provide the training. And so that, depending on how many new staff we would have coming in in a given year, might cost a little bit more. But these designs that we're putting forward at the moment, they are all returning set-line survey specialists, maybe one or two new. And so the training costs are very minimal. And so in that sense, we're actually probably costing them out based on the, I guess, commercial rates that we've seen elsewhere, whether it be in the Pacific or the Atlantic and the Mediterranean, for example, at a similar cost rate per set-line survey specialist for a day in the field. And so I would hazard a guess, we'd have to do a proper analysis, but at a sort of an estimate at this point, I would say that the way we operate and hire the set-line survey specialists on short-term contracts would be very equivalent financially to the cost for private companies to do it.
Another real benefit to sort of our, we might call our in-house field staff, is, one, they're trained to do the scientific sampling. We have a lot of trust in the sampling and a lot of faith in that they're going to go out there and do a great job for us. But the other thing that I've noticed, and as Dr. Wilson said, these field samplers are coming back. Some of them have been with us for 20 years. And there's a real buy-in to the survey. They have a lot of belief in the survey and they really enjoy doing this. And that's really nice for us to see. We learn a lot from them every year that they're out on water as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Rial, I see a comment from Bob Alveson in the chat. Would you like me to read that and answer that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. So Commissioner Alveson asks, are there TRAL surveys in 2025 in the GOA that can assist in our stock assessment? And yes, there are TRAL surveys in the GOA. The NOAA TRAL survey operates biannually, so it operates every other year. So there would not be annual, annual observations from that survey. And I believe Dr. Webster and Dr. Stewart have both looked into this in the past, as well as other surveys like the Sablefish Longline Survey. And what they've found is, for one, those TRAL surveys in GOA are quite different than the TRAL survey in the eastern Bering Sea. It's a much rockier habitat. They operate differently. They operate biannually. And there just didn't seem to be a lot of improvement using those data to supplement the index. So I guess all that I can really say without having Dr. Stewart and Dr. Webster chime in is that they have looked into that and they have determined that it just isn't, there doesn't seem to be a worth in including it in our, in our data.
Yeah, thanks, Alan. David, do you know if we've been able to have Neil's microphone activated? I see it's still off.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's still not activated.
Okay.
Not sure if the team's been able to assist there.
I have a question, and maybe it was along the lines of what Peter was asking as well. It's like on the slide in front of us right now, it has the base headquarter costs incurred, even if no FIS is conducted, of roughly $600,000. Can you just remind us of what those costs are?
Sure. So that incorporates the salaries, wages, benefits for the four headquarters FIS staff. It also includes the marine lease we hold at a facility very close to the office where we store all of the FIS gear between when it's deployed in the field and it's not. And I think that's probably most of it. So it's those, those two core costs of the four headquarters staff and the storage lease that we hold.
All right, thanks, Dave. I see a text from Neil that he's tried various ways to get online, but so far, no success. As far as this microphone, I don't see any other hands raised. Just see if anyone else has any other question. Commissioners have any other questions?
Sure, thanks, Commissioner Rial. And I'm monitoring the chat here as well. You might be able to type in anything that Commissioner Davis needs to.
Okay, thanks, Alan.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner DeGrief's got his hand up again.
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, this is the, in regards to revenue neutrality and the idea of maintaining it while we're in this, you know, very, very, you know, prices are down, fisher, fewer. Revenue neutrality can include an input of revenue from elsewhere, like say, something on a budget line or some direct money in. Am I correct in that? You're still within that definition of revenue neutrality?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, I think we can carry on.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, so Part B, what is a fiscally viable design for 2025? So here, we've done some work in determining what, what, how could we design a survey in 2025 that still meets these priority objectives and is more fiscally viable than that base block design that we saw on the previous slide? So the idea here is to sample one charter region in each of 2B and 2C, which is core areas that are typically revenue positive, I say typically. And that's projected to reduce losses relative to no FIS. So you saw that about $600,000 cost with no survey. This would actually reduce that, and there'd probably be about, I think, $500,000 cost if we did this survey. So additionally, it'd be good to survey in Region Three. And so one charter region in 3A and 3B to maintain that sampling. And noting that they are sort of put right together to make it a more optimized design, maybe more attractive to the bids because the stations are nearby to each other. And then additionally, there's interest in sampling 2A and 4A and 4B. And you see some gold dots, gold locations out in 2A, 4A, and 4B. And noting that that would be covered by supplementary. So that would be something, as Commissioner DeGrief noted, in some influx of outside funds. So here's that same table with a new row added, the supplementary funding, which is a known source of funding to, to account for to the sampling in 2A, 4A, and 4B. We have total projected cost of this. You see it's less than that base block design. Now it's about $2.1 million. We have the total projected revenue, which is also slightly less, but it reduces the gap between the cost and the revenue. And then we have the supplementary funding for those outside areas. And where we get at with this is a net revenue loss of, or a net negative revenue of $574,000. And for this survey to go forward, that would be covered by any additional supplementary funding received in year. I think that's a discussion that we'll have in Part C. So the recommendation from the secretariat means, is to move forward with this design option, called the fiscally viable design, with the assumption that additional supplementary funding will become available in early 2025 and any deficit will be covered by some reserve fund. So if additional supplementary funding is not available, may be able to cover the full amount for that year. So, Dr. Wilson, please add if you're missing something on this. So, Dr. Wilson, please add if I'm missing something on this. Okay, so we don't want to stop there. We always like to do lots of work here. And so we decided to come forth with some modified FIS design options to show you the fiscally viable design meeting the data needs in terms of collecting samples from all biological regions. However, there's some charter regions that were sampled in 2024. And what that means is that some charter regions will go unsampled for a longer period of time. So we provide some alternative designs that increase the spatial coverage and would reduce the uncertainty that we have in these areas that have not been sampled for a year or two. So this would be sort of getting into the spirit of this rotating base block design. So let's present some modified designs. You can see here, this is called Option 2. And what I want you to note on the figure first is that this area between 3A and 3B is not being surveyed in this year. And instead, it's being replaced with an area, or actually two charter regions, I believe, up here in 3A that are next to each other. Now, they're projected to be a little bit less revenue positive, you might say. But they're high priority charter regions to survey since we have not surveyed them in a year or two. So the projected net revenue for this design is $710,000, negative 710,000. And that's compared to the previous fiscally viable design I showed you. That was 574,000. So you see, there's a little bit more deficit here. And that's because we're projecting to not bring in as much revenue from these areas as compared to the 3A, 3B areas. And noting that this also includes that supplementary funding for 2A, 4A and 4B. So let's take a look at another option, Option 3, which instead of surveying the areas along the line of 3A, 3B, it moves and surveys two high important areas out in 3B, regulatory area 3B. And so replacing these two areas in 3B with, instead of those other two, would have a projected net revenue of negative 715,000. Again, it's very similar to the Option 2, but a little bit more than the fiscally viable option. So recommendation at this point in time is the Secretariat does not moving forward with Options 2 or 3 unless substantial supplementary funding becomes available. And this has to happen soon because there's a lot of, a lot of pieces in play right now. We need to procure bait and we need to do some other things. And we need to get bids out for charter vessels, you know, relatively soon. Okay, so that's the end of Part B, some of fiscally viable design. And then a couple of options added on to that. And I'll take a quick pause before I turn it over to Dr. Wilson.
All right, thanks, Alan. I see a couple of hands up. First off, John.
Thanks, and thanks, Alan, for the presentation. So you covered that the intent is to survey via random block design. That would be kind of our goal. But the proposed design in Option 1 doesn't seem to measure up to that goal. If I'm not mistaken, Option 1 includes a lot of the same areas that were sampled in 2024. So, you know, not really being a random block design. And Option 2 or 3, they both move in that direction by sampling a different block in either 3A or 3B. But the stations in 2B and 2C, I think, are very similar to what was sampled in 2024. So I guess I'm wondering if you can help me reconcile that because it appears that we're, with the Secretariat's recommendation, that we're setting ourselves up for some bias here. And in the, in the paper, Paper 3, figures 10 through 13 illustrate quite a bit of variability across time by biological region and by regulatory area in both the one-year and three-year change in the O32 weight per unit effort. So given that variability, it seems like if we don't vary the survey areas, we would expect bias to start emerging. So could you just elaborate on that a little bit, please?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Commissioner Curlin. And that's a really good insight, especially about the variability and the importance of rotating through these different areas. We could be setting ourselves up for some bias. I, too, as my understanding is, the areas in 2B and 2C are not changing between these different options and the fiscally viable design. And those are really the core areas that are revenue positive that help reduce the cost of the survey. So as I understand it, we have not been modifying 2B and 2C. And I believe last year, all of 2C was surveyed. And this area of 2B was also surveyed. So you're correct there in that 2B and 2C would not be much different than last year. But that's okay because we have had a good survey in 2B and 2C for a number of years now. So I think we're getting good estimates from those two areas. Moving on to 3A and 3B, because the other areas are remaining the same as well. It's really what's happening in 3A and 3B. In 2024, these two areas that are in the fiscally viable design were surveyed. And the area shown in this Option 2 was not actually surveyed in 2024. So that would be the benefit of looking at Option 2 is now we're surveying an area that was not surveyed last year instead of surveying the same areas that were surveyed last year. And please correct me if I'm wrong, Kayla, at the time. Yeah, so, yeah, I can, if you do want to see what areas were surveyed last year, I can bring up a plot of that as well. But the idea in Option 2 is this area was not surveyed last year. So it does sort of capture that rotation of the blocks, surveying a new area. And then in Option 3, again, this area was not surveyed last year. So it would be an area that has, I can't, I cannot remember the last time these two areas were surveyed.
Two years ago?
I think two, two years ago, is what Kayla's saying. So it does capture that, that rotation concept a little bit. Would be surveying some new areas to reduce the potential for bias, but does have an increased cost associated with it.
Yeah, thanks. And, you know, I certainly acknowledge that Option 2 and 3 move in that direction. I guess in general, I have a kind of sort of a reticence about fishing for dollars, you know, that we're consciously perhaps putting more survey effort into areas that we think will have higher revenue. You know, it just troubles me from the standpoint of scientific survey design and how we should be structuring these things. And, you know, I guess I'm, in addition to reflecting that, that potential for bias, I guess I'm also wondering about whether there are also implications for the demographic and growth data collected in the FIS and whether potential bias is being considered there. Should we expect increased bias in understanding of growth recruitment or mortality of the stock? You know, again, if we're not really rotating the survey areas. So it's just, I guess I just wanted to highlight those things as, you know, something that's on my mind as we make these choices. Thanks.
Yeah, and if I can just chime in with there. And I think that really comes back to that base block design for 2025, which was on Slide 9. And that's the Secretariat's recommendation, is that we work towards, whether it's in 2025 or 26 or 27, to implement this base block design. That's our formal recommendation of what we need to be achieving. That said, with a $2 million loss, it's not fiscally viable at this time without significant supplementary funding. So i- if you're asking what the Secretariat would recommend to minimize that bias, to make sure that we're getting the biological samples we need, then it's this design. Unfortunately, that would use our entire reserve at this point in time. And so I guess we would just need some boundaries or guidance set by the Commission about the financial risk that you would be willing to accept. And we could then come up with potentially a modified option design. Thanks.
Yeah, understood. Thanks. And, you know, I wasn't intending to be critical of you guys. I know you're trying to operate and, you know, with a lot of constraints here. I guess I was just trying to sort of highlight some of the red flags that I see, you know, both for my fellow commissioners and for members of the public who are listening in. Thanks.
Yeah, John, thanks for raising that. As you say, I think we're equally concerned about what you raised as far as concerns about potential for bias and fishing for dollars. I guess it would be good to see if we had another option that would kind of alleviate that. And maybe we'll get to that later in the presentation. Peter, I see your hands up.
Yeah, thanks. Actually, I had very similar comments as John and yourself regarding, you know, the bias that's getting introduced. I mean, for me, I'm, you know, looking forward in some of the documents that are coming or that have been published. You know, there may be some real concern about what's happening in Region 3 in terms of, you know, and having, what I would say, I don't know, but, you know, this one area as a proxy for that whole region. You know, I don't know how to quantify bias. It seems like there is some modeling that's being done that projects, projects some of what we might see. But, yeah, I have very similar concerns. I mean, I think that the base block, base block design, there's a lot of work, time and effort put into designing that to try to come up with the best answer on rotating our vessels and minimizing costs and reducing bias and keeping us within our CVs. So for myself, I think we need to make that a priority in terms of budgetary needs for the Secretariat. I think the FIS is a very important input into, you know, our stock assessment and our understanding of the halibut resource. So, yeah, it does concern me when we have these proxies. It's almost like a proxy for the, for the area. And they consistently, and it's driven for a means of financial, which I live in the real world, I understand what's happening. But it is somewhat concerning. Thank you.
Commissioner Alveson, as he said, right?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob. I had mine on mute.
Paul, so the question Alan I have is, like, we're looking at this fiscally viable design and the heart of 3A doesn't have a station in it, but we have port samplers there. Is there a chance for them to augment the growth concern that John raised? I know when they're landed, you know, they're headed and gutted, well, the head's on, but male, female issue identification is a problem. But is there a chance to, to augment the growth issue with our port samplers?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Commissioner Alveson. The port sampling is a very important source of data into the stock assessment and the general understanding of Pacific halibut. And in fact, when Dr. Stewart and I were doing simulations with the stock assessment, we found that reducing the survey design, increasing the variability, had a smaller effect than we expected. And that was because the stock assessment started to rely more on the samples from the commercial fishery, the fishery dependent data. But there are some concerns there. Yes, it would still provide some information. However, when we get landings at those different ports that are staffed in, say, 3A, those landings can come from different areas. We do not have specific area information or location sometimes. The landings are only over 32-inch fish. So we're only collecting otolus from over 32-inch fish. We're not getting a sort of preview of what incoming recruitment might be. So that's often a concern. You know, the observation's going to be a little bit more delayed. And we already have that six to eight-year delay of really getting a good view of recruitment, incoming recruitment. And then, yeah, and so, and I think, too, the FIS is just out there really getting a lot of information that you just don't get at the port sampler locations, the extra information we're capturing from maturity. And we're really getting a good picture in the middle of summer, what's happening to the Pacific halibut stock. So port sampling is a good, you know, a good thing to do. We need to do that for characterizing the commercial fishery. It helps us understand what's happening with the Pacific halibut stock. But for that real detailed information, that's where the FIS comes in and is very helpful. And just helps us get a preview on what is coming and what the fishery could be expecting in the future instead of reacting to what the fishery is currently seeing.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other hands up at this point.
Okay, I'll just go forward here to Part C and I'll turn it over to Dr. Wilson to talk about mine.
Thank you very much. So in this Part C, the Commission asked the Secretariat to identify a number of potential areas for supplementary funding or just additional complementary funding for fishery independent set line survey. There are a number of areas that we are already aware of and some that we have advanced our sort of look into to see where we can get a supplementary funding. The first is the ongoing supplementary funding that we're receiving from both contracting party governments. And so over the course of the 2023 FIS and 2024 FIS, we receive direct payments from both governments. Canada in 2024 for $125,000 US and the USA in 2023 for $114,000. These may or may not continue into the future. And it's something that we continue to work with, with both governments to identify additional supplementary funding directly to go to the FIS. For the 2025 FIS, the US has committed and already provided to us $387,000 specifically to undertake fishery independent set line survey sampling in regulatory area 2A and then also in 4A and 4B. And so that's incorporated into the designs and the budget estimates that you already see included in Figure 7 as part of Option 1. We are also looking at potential large-scale contracting party contributions. And this is something we've been working very hard with both the Chair and Vice Chair of the Commission. We do have detailed in Appendix 1 of Paper 03 some communication that's been going out to various legislators and others to just identify the supplementary funding needing of the Commission to undertake the set line survey on an annual basis. And it says Appendix 2 here, but we actually moved it to Information Paper 01. And that's a brochure that we've developed, again, internally, but in conjunction with the contracting parties that identifies and provides a little bit more information about what the survey is and then also our ongoing needs for approximately $2.5 million on an annual basis, at least in the short term, so that we can get to sampling that base block design that we spoke of on Slide 9. Yeah, if you're going to just advance. The other option, and it's something that we're going to be talking at both the upcoming interim meeting, but then also the Finance and Administration Committee meeting, is to directly explore options for incorporation into the annual contracting party contributions of line item for the fishery independent set line survey. As an example, previously, the contracting party contributions that we receive on an annual basis were not allocated to the fishery independent set line survey. So our Fund 40 within the budget. And so what this proposal would mean is going through a discussion with both governments to see if they would be willing, if you would be willing to incorporate a specific line item for the fishery independent set line survey, at least in the short term, while we hopefully traverse the sort of difficult fight. uh, for the fishery independent set line survey, at least in the short term, while we, um, hopefully traverse the sort of difficult financial times we, the fishery in particular is, is experiencing and with low catch rates across the board. Um, unfortunately, we can't do that for FY twenty twenty-five as the contracting party budget has already been approved and we've already received the payment from Canada. And the US appropriations have, have already been finalized. And so, uh, it wouldn't be possible for FY twenty twenty-five. And so that would be the ongoing discussion that we'd have at finance and administration committee in January, um, to look at the FY twenty twenty-six and future budgets. Um, and then finally, we, we've also had, uh, over the course of the last couple of years, some interest expressed by various industry groups to offer direct funding for the fishery independent set line surveys in their specific areas of interest. Obviously, there are various pros and cons associated with that. Um, and unfortunately, at the, at the moment, due to the potential conflicts of interest, uh, and we would need to change our internal regulations, which currently would prohibit such an approach. Um, we're not able to, to explore that direct funding, uh, option. That said, there are other options such as, um, it, industry groups are willing to offer, um, say discounted vessel bids and the like. That could be a, a viable option to approach noting that that goes through a, um, tender process and, uh, those who are submitting tenders could certainly discount their, their vessel bids accordingly if that was, uh, of interest. So they're the four core areas that we're currently exploring and have explored. Um, there are a few others that I haven't included in, in this presentation, but, uh, something we're just working with the, the chair and vice chair in particular. Uh, and I'll pause if there's any questions.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. Um, I don't see any raised hands at this point. Oh, Peter.
Hi, Dave. In terms of industry direct contributions, um, has the secretary explored, uh, use of fish in Canada as a possible option to, um, you know, procure more surveys, you know, within Canada?
Um, not, not at this point in time. The discussions we've had with the use of fish, uh, legislation has, um, not been particularly encouraging. Um, that said, we are, in the past, we have utilized that, uh, um, funding for undertaking rockfish, um, sampling within area two B. And so it, it's certainly something that is possible, um, but we haven't explored it for Pacific Halibut at this time.
Okay.
Um, okay. I don't see any other hands raised. Dave, were you gonna carry on or?
Uh, no, I'm passing back to, um, Alan.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks, commissioners, and thanks, Dr. Wilson. Um, this is the fun part. We gotta talk about simulations now, the real quantitative stuff that, um, that I have been involved with. So part D was the directive from the commission to, um, a bit more explanation of the potential for bias in the fist designs. And so we, of course, went to our computers, wrote a lot of code and did a lot of simulations to, to get at this. And hopefully we can summarize it for you succinctly here. So first off, we know that within regulatory areas, the, the Pacific Halibut, the indices of Pacific Halibut density can change by large amounts over short periods of time. And sometimes it can change in an area or even a charter region or even a region, um, by changes of fifteen percent or more. So we can see these large swings in the biomass of these different areas. Um, and over a three-year period, it's really normal to see these large changes in the indexes. Um, so we expect a lot of variability, this interannual variability. And that's a different source of variability than what the a set or the survey is trying to estimate, is trying to estimate the variability within the year, what it saw that year. But then there's the changes between years, which are really out of our control, where the fish move, how many fish die, how many fish survive, for example. And what this means is that if we have low sampling or low spatial coverage, we may miss some of these trends. We may miss some of the big swings that we're seeing in these different regions or regulatory areas. Um, and so therefore, these past designs, or at least the design that was implemented in twenty twenty-four, and then this proposed viable, viable design, fiscally viable design, have a high potential for bias in certain areas and regions, um, as well as the coast wide estimate, because we're not getting a full picture of this. Um, and then finally, this last note here is that twenty twenty-five would be a second or third year with reduced coverage for a lot of the stock. There are some areas that have not been surveyed in two or three years. So here's an example of, of a one-year potential change in the mean O thirty-two W P U E. So if you remember, O thirty-two W P U E is one of the, the main indices we look at. It's used to calculate stock distribution, for example, uh, across regulatory areas. Um, it has been used in the past to, to give, um, uh, idea of the distribution of the stock and how the T C Y should be distributed. And so a lot of people are familiar with this. But looking at it in this context, and this is how much did the index change compared to the previous year? And so you can see in region two, for example, down here, we had, you know, um, it changed a lot, but in some years from compared to the previous year, it can change by more than fifteen percent. Um, and the region two is one of our best sampled areas. So this is that interannual variability that we would expect. Um, the other areas, you know, are seeing similar things, but even on the coast wide level, um, that index can change quite a lot from year to year. And we saw that very large change, um, just a couple of years ago in the index that, uh, it dropped significantly. So this is something that, you know, the reason why we want a really good design is to try to capture what the change actually is with as precisely as possible. When we look at this over a three-year period, so these are the estimated change, um, compared to three years ago, we see that these are quite large as well. And there's some large changes, sometimes up to thirty, forty percent, as can be seen here in region three. Um, and they swing in both directions. So really, this is a way to look at, there's a lot of variability in this stock from year to year. But it's not uncommon to see a change of about fifteen percent. So a couple of insights here. One, the fiscally viable design would result in about sixty percent of the habitat being covered by either the FIS or the NOAA TROL survey. So you think sixty's percent is pretty good. You can, you can look at it with the glass half full or the glass half empty, which it's almost exactly half full or empty in this context. So with this type of coverage and the observed levels of change we've seen on those previous slides, we would expect coast wide indices of abundance to have bias potentially up to less or minus fifteen percent in the twenty twenty-five FIS. And that's with this fiscally viable design. So the potential for bias is there. What is actually realized is not known at this time. What is important to note is that these regions three and four B, which were not surveyed, uh, extensively last year, four B wasn't surveyed. Um, but, and they, some of these areas in these, uh, regions have not been surveyed in a number of years, um, that bias could potentially be even higher. And so it's, you know, it is important to get out into those areas every once in a while to reduce this bias. So, okay, we took this one step further. We had a look at, well, okay, if there's this bias in the, in the FIS, what does that mean for the stock assessment? How does that affect the estimates from the stock assessment? So, okay, so we did a number of simulations in the stock assessment and we discussed those at the twenty-fifth session of the SRB, uh, just last September. And, um, we, we made a number of assumptions. Let's say the true FIS trend were going down by fifteen percent. So in reality, the halibut population continues to decline and it went down by fifteen percent, um, in the next one, two, and even three years. But we had a reduced FIS design that estimated there was no change. So it was just a flat trend. So the reduced FIS design had this level of bias. So therefore, we're assuming the estimates are biased. What would happen in the stock assessment, noting the stock assessment has all the commissary, uh, commercial data, the fishery dependent data has C P U E, it has age compositions from the, the fishery data. So it would be getting that, those trends from those sources of data as Commissioner Alves noted, uh, earlier. So what would really happen is if the fit with the reduced FIS design, these assumptions, we would, the stock assessment would typically overestimate the spawning biomass, because it thinks the trend is flat, but the actual trend is declining. It would have about a two to three percent overestimate spawning biomass. It would have about a one percent overestimate in the SPR, which can be, which in plain terms means you would be underestimating the fishing intensity. You would think the fishing intensity was less than it actually was. And then in the decision table, which presents a probability of stock decline in twenty twenty-eight, the three-year projection, this would have a nine percent underestimate in the probability of stock decline in the next three years. So it would be, it would be painting basically a rosier picture. And these are about the quantities that it would. It's not large amounts, and that's because there's a lot of other data that, and, and there's also just the, uh, inertia of the population and in the model, it just cannot change that much that quickly. But there is for, there is the potential for this bias. And so looking at this, this bias in the probability of stock decline and with a nine percent underestimate, the, um, we figured the coast Y T C Y would probably need to be reduced by about four million pounds. Um, and that would equate to about twenty-four million dollars in landed catch at six dollars a pound. And so what that means is we just looked at how decisions have been made. And if we're underestimating the stock decline and the decision was to not have the stock decline, that this would be the, the change in the T C Y that would be necessary. So these reduced fist designs, accounting for the potential bias and management's decisions, really could have a significant impact on the short-term fish yields and revenue. And it's just good to note that this is an assumption of the bias and the level of bias fifteen percent is possible, but that's not what would actually happen in reality. So we don't know. It could be more than that. It could be less than that. But this is an example. What if the bias was fifteen percent? Um, we estimated a flat trend. This would be the consequences to the short-term management. Um, so that's the simulations we did with the stock assessment. And then I just want to note, we've also brought this type of analysis into the M S E, which will be presented at the interim and annual meetings as well to show the more long-term impacts of these reduced designs. I think that brings us to the end of the presentation. Um, and we're open for questions.
All right. Thanks, Alan. Um, Bob, go ahead.
So Alan, um, if we had a, a series of normal, uh, surveys without these, uh, problems we're having now, what's the bias on a normal survey versus the, what you're projecting here?
So with even that, um, that base block design, we would expect the bias to be minimal. Um, and that design is put in there to actually minimize the bias and, and have the bias be as close to zero as we can get with this type of rotating design. So we would expect there to be no bias. There would certainly be more uncertainty from year to year. But with, um, with that base block design, which had the negative two million dollars, um, revenue, we would expect to have, um, minimal bias that would not be a great concern.
That, that's helpful to know. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Peter.
Yeah, thanks, Alan, for that. I will be interested to hear, uh, what the long-term implications and costs are of, you know, having these reduced survey designs. Um, one thing you noted was about, uh, using the NOAA TROL survey. Um, and, uh, I was curious what the biases are on that. I mean, um, using that survey, comparing it to, uh, you know, a fixed line survey that's designed to catch halibut compared to a trial survey that's probably doing for, for many species. Uh, just from my little bit of knowledge, I know that they tend to catch smaller fish and that a lot of the larger fish, you know, swim out of the way of, uh, the trawls. Um, or, 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 or more successful at it. So I was just curious as to the bias, uh, using that NOAA TROL survey for, you know, what looks like a pretty substantial amount of habitat. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Degree. You, you're correct. If, one, the trial survey surveys, um, uh, a, a large portion of potential habitat for Pacific Halibut, that would be difficult to survey with a long line survey. And that's why we utilize that. Um, and you're exactly correct. The trial survey does catch smaller halibut, um, and, um, sometimes two-year-olds that long line surveys would rarely have ever see. But what we've done is there were two separate years. I can't remember the exact years. One might have been two thousand sixteen, where we did some paired stations. Uh, we put the FIS out there where they did the trial survey in the same station or very close. And we did a comparison of what the FIS long line survey caught and then what the trial survey caught. And we compared and we said, yeah, the trial survey catches a lot less fish. And then we calibrated the trial survey to match the, uh, fist long line survey. So even though the trial survey is catching a very different demographic of fish, it's calibrated to be representative of if, of the fist, if the fist was survey, surveying out there. So that calibration, we've done that in two years and surprised them. I mean, fortunately, those two years showed a very similar calibration. So we have a lot of faith in that calibration. Um, and, and how we're doing the analysis, it's that it is consistent and it is getting a uh, accurate, precise measure of O thirty-two fish seen out there or what the fist would catch and what we call all sizes. And so that calibration process is very important. And we've done some quantitative analysis to make sure that it's, um, precise.
Okay, thanks. Just a little bit further on that. Um, so those calibrations were done over two years. Um, you know, does age of the, you know, like that's a snapshot in time. Does the age of, and the stock, uh, composition, uh, would, would that not change over time? And would that have any, um, effect on that calibration? Thank you.
Sure. The, the age, um, composition sure certainly would change over time, but the way this calibration is done, it should take that into account. It's basically calibrating selectivity curves. So it's saying, if there were this many fish out there, this is what the long line survey would catch. And this week, then quantitatively figure out what the trial survey would match in that sense. Um, so we convert the selectivity curves over. So it's, it might have a little bit of effect on the results and getting more samples, say, of large fish or young fish in that, in that analysis. But where we're really paying a lot of attention right now, uh, and what would be important to this preparation is any potential change in the trial survey. So NOAA is going through some reevaluations of their surveys. There's a potential that they're going to use a new net on the trial survey in, in a few years. Um, and so if that, when that occurs, or if that occurs, we want to make sure that we go out there and calibrate again, that we are getting an accurate, um, calibration to whatever new design or here that they are using in the trial survey. Uh, so, so yeah, it, it's something important. It's something we're definitely, uh, paying attention to as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Peter. Um, I have a question from Neil. And you may have answered some of this already, Alan, but, um, so, um, from the question that Bob asked about, uh, the GOAT ROLL. But has the secretariat ever assessed the ability to draw in other agency surveys beyond the bearing sea trial survey? And to fill in some of the gaps where we don't survey? Is there any potential there? I think in your earlier answer, Alan, you mentioned, uh, looking at some of the Canadian, but, um, have you, has there been a, I guess, a definitive work undertaken to see if there's other potential surveys that would provide some information?
Yeah, um, I think before I joined IPHC, Dr. Webster had done quite a bit of work looking at what other surveys, um, could supplement our, uh, the FIS and the analysis, the, the calculation of the W P U E, say. And that was a time when they weren't going as deep, um, the stations weren't going as deep. And so there, they were actually using the sablefish long line survey to, um, supplement the deep water of Pacific Halibut. And there's not a lot of halibut, is, from my understanding and observ- And there's not a lot of halibut, is from my understanding, observed on the long line survey relative of the NOAA long line survey relatively. Um, and so it was useful. Um, but once we went out deep and we did that expansion into deeper water, we found that including that survey now did not have any, um, benefit at all. It was just more of a, a more analysis to be done and, uh, made the analysis even more difficult. So that survey had been removed. Um, and so to, to not get too much into the details, I know Dr. Webster has, um, done a lot of work evaluating potential for other surveys. Um, as we mentioned in Goa, the, I'm familiar with the trawl surveys there. They operate very differently. They're on a biennial schedule, so there's limited information from them. Um, there's some trawl surveys in two B in Canada that could be useful. I'm not sure if they've been looked into, but that's something I'm sure Dr. Webster would have a much better answer for. Um, he's much more familiar with it. But from my understanding is the, the game you get from including these surveys would be minimal compared to just having a good fist design, this base block rotating design. Sorry, I can't answer that more.
No, appreciate that. Thanks, Alan. Um, just before pointing to you, John, I have a comment and a question. So, um, in your presentation, you had a slide that spoke of needing to make a decision um, by the end of November, so you can organize and appropriately and get bids out and, uh, and purchase bait, et cetera. So I guess, I mean, that's our window for a decision. Um, so we're almost in November now. Um, so David, I understand that in looking at the most recent fiscal, um, standing for the Secretariat that, um, we had kind of an aspirational target of 1.5 million for the, uh, Fund fifty of the fist reserve. I, the figures I saw most recently show that we're going to have roughly, um, I think it's in total, um, a reserve potential for roughly about three million. You can correct me if I'm wrong in that, but it, it's in that order, I believe. And, you know, some of the questions that have been asked John, Peter and Bob, um, about, you know, um, potential for bias moving to the base block design. And the lack of, I would say, sort of surveys in the, the option one, uh, was repeating, um, basically what we did last year in three A and three B. Um, we'd like, I think it would be useful to see if we could, um, use some of that to reserve fund beyond, uh, option one, a higher amount, um, that would get to address some of the issues that have been raised by commissioners here this morning. And so I don't know, as you indicated earlier, David, um, raised away, um, uh, due to a death of his, of his mom. Um, I think he's back next week. But I guess, are there other things that you want to show us, um, today? If you had some more flexibility, use, uh, direction from the commissioners to use some of that reserve fund? Um, and if so, maybe there's more work that needs to be done before you provide that to us for a decision. But, um, so I guess that's a question for you, Dave.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. Um, so just, just to provide some, some additional clarity. And so, uh, as you said, the commission has an aspirational goal of a, um, a fist reserve of around 1.5 million. The current fist reserve is, is negative. Uh, I think we are coming out of F Y twenty twenty-four with about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars negative, um, in the fist account. The fifty reserve fund is for all operations, so in all headquarter operations. And we carried in a reserve of, uh, a balance of about $2 million. Um, we do expect that, we're just finalizing everything at the moment with our accountants for that to move up to approach $3 million. Um, and so noting that we have an aspirational goal of a $2 million reserve there, that we do have a, a million dollars to potentially put forward to the fish, fist design for 2025, should the commission, uh, desire to do that. Um, and so I think the, the full block design is still well beyond that, unless there are some significant external supplemental funds coming in. Um, so running on the assumption that that's not the case by, by the end of November, if we were to look at that, um, fiscally viable design, which is currently minus 574, we could certainly accommodate that within our current, um, Fund fifty reserve. Noting, of course, that we came up with a number of, um, alternative options that increase that deficit depending on the risk appetite of the commission, uh, to go negative. And these were those other designs, um, which Alan walked us through as option two and option three. And so option two on the screen, you can see here is that the sampling in area three A, and I believe that is Fairweather, is that correct?
Yeah, okay.
And Prince William Sound, um, increases that deficit to about 710. And then if we, as an alternative, look at three, at three B, it would have instead of that three A, and this is removing that area around Trinity, around Kodiak of 750,000, $715,000 negative. Now Alan's put together, uh, a couple of slides that talk about combining those options. And so I'm going to pass Alan and he's going to put a table up just to provide you with some, some additional insight into what, um, the potential impact might be financially. So I'll pass back to Alan, uh, and it's just got a couple of slides for you.
Okay, um, I can walk you through this table really quick, but, um, hopefully it's big enough for you to see. If you need to zoom in on anything, let me know. Um, what this table is, it's table three from the document, I believe, the top of it. So, uh, zero, one, two, and three, the rows labeled zero, one, two, and three are from the document. And, and those were the different designs presented this morning. Um, and what we thought is like, wow, you know, we, we could do this forever. We can add all sorts of options. But we thought, well, what if we took this fiscally viable design? And instead of replacing, say Yakatah and Prince William Sound, those two areas in three A, we just added them in, in addition. Um, and so what that would mean, let me jump to, uh, a different slide here. And, uh, so this was that fiscally viable design that we saw. And then this is option two. And so you see the area here around Kodiak changed from gold to purple. Instead, this area went to gold. So it's replacing those areas. So what if we just added in the areas up by Prince William Sound in there? And what we calculate the deficit to be is about $947,000. And that's so adding new areas in. Um, if we did the same thing in three B, so the fiscally viable design, but added in those two areas in three B, um, that would be a deficit of about $945,000. And then if we did all of those areas, so we took the fiscally viable design and added in the two areas in three B and added in the two areas in three A, then that would be a deficit of about 1.3 million dollars. So we're just sort of shuffling the cards here. But what is interesting and I've heard, um, today, uh, especially comment from Commissioner Curland is we have sampled those, uh, areas near Kodiak in 2024. Um, and maybe prioritizing these new areas in three B, what would the cost be if we had in the option of both these new areas in three B and the new areas in three A, but did not do the two areas near, um, Kodiak? And that would be a deficit of about 1.2 million dollars. So, um, I want to note, these new numbers here were done this morning just by looking at other tables and adding numbers together. They were not done with new projections using this, uh, fancy projection tool. But I think these are close and within the, the realm of uncertainty to give the commissioners an idea of a few more options. And I can show some maps of these things if, um, you would like to see them.
Yeah, all right. Thanks, Alan. That's very helpful. Um, John, you've been, had your hand up for a bit. I'll go to you.
Yeah, thanks. Um, maybe not entirely overtaken by subsequent discussion, but I was going to go back, Alan, to, um, your slides discussing bias. Uh, I, I guess it was particularly twenty-three, I think. And, um, I, I was wondering, maybe I missed it, maybe you said it, uh, whether that was specifically associated with the option one or, or not specifically associated with one of the options that you all were, uh, putting on the table for us.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Curland. Really good question. Um, so these, um, the, these simulations were not done with the, they're not specific to the option one, the fiscally viable design. They are more related to the base block and then a, um, a core block design and a, um, a reduced core design. So, but, but I think this, the slide twenty-two that shows the bias potential, that is more of a theoretical, uh, concept, looking at the actual changes observed in the last few years. And then making, um, hypotheses about the potential for bias. And then the stock assessment simulations were done, uh, more assuming uncertainties that would be seen with probably, uh, a design more similar to what was in 2024. So not, um, really a bias that would be occurring over many years. And, um, would be building up over time because the outer areas would not be surveyed. So, yeah, the, the sim, the assessment simulations are probably a little bit more extreme than the fiscally viable design would show. But it, but the, the, the hypotheses and the understanding of this is that the, there would be a potential bias with the fiscally viable fist design because it's not surveying the, the areas that haven't been surveyed.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I, I wonder if we could take you up on your offer to show, uh, figures for the options, four, five, six, and seven, just to make sure we're all clear on, on what you're talking about there.
Yeah, sure. I don't have specific figures for those, um, options, but, but I can show you exactly, give you a better idea visually of what had occurred. I first wanted to just show you what was surveyed in 2024 for some context. And you can see here between three B and three A near Kodiak is that area that we've been talking about that, that in the fiscally viable design is surveyed again because that's, uh, more, uh, revenue or, or positive area, I guess you might say. So here's that fiscally viable design, again, showing that area near Kodiak. And what, um, what I can do is just sort of flip back and forth between option this and option two and option three. I haven't been able to put it all together onto one plot. So if we were to add in the three A areas, pretend that area remains gold, and then we would add this area up here. So the difference would be this area would remain gold. And then if we were to add in three B, that would be this area out here and this would remain gold. And then adding them all together, which was about that 1.3 negative of value, that would be this area in Kodiak and this area in three B. So that would be a really good coverage of three A and three B. Sorry, that's the best I could do this morning.
And, and then, uh, just one follow-up, the, the, um, the one that was, I think, minus 1.2, uh, 1.2 million negative, that was showing this area that's on the screen now for three B. And then that more central area in three A, but not including the area right around Kodiak. Is that correct?
Exactly. Yeah. So you just colored these points in gold over there. And that would be the 1.2, the negative.
Thanks for that. And then, um, not to throw more variables into the mix here, but, um, a- as I noted earlier, and you did as well, um, the areas proposed, uh, for two B and two C for 2025 were sampled in 2024. So should we be looking at some options that are different from that?
Yeah, I, that, that is a potential. I think the good thing is all of two C was surveyed in 2024. So there isn't a real high priority to, to survey all of two C again. Um, um, and then this northern area of two B has typically been the, um, area of higher density of Pacific halibut, um, in the survey. And I think this lower area of two B is, is a slightly lower priority than the northern area. Um, most of the changes and, and a lot of the biomass occurs in the northern part of two B. That's not to say this isn't important down here, but if you were to prioritize north versus southern two B, you would definitely prioritize the northern part of that based on, um, past, uh, trends and, um, observed W P V in those two areas.
Yeah, I see. You don't see, you don't see big bias implications for, for sampling the same areas again.
Yeah, I think the bias is pretty minimal in those two areas, even with this type of design.
And if, if I could add, sorry, just to, to interrupt, uh, if we did remove those two areas, um, they are currently the only two areas that are estimated to be revenue positive. And so I, I know the sensitivities around, um, the revenue positive component. But if you did remove them and move to other areas, it means that that deficit would increase, um, probably quite a lot. And so we'd have to run those numbers to see whether that would just be a couple of hundred thousand dollars extra negative or more or less.
All right. Anything else, John? Uh, Peter?
Yeah, more just along the lines of what, um, uh, John was mentioning. Uh, um, it's nice to go back last year, but it would be great to, uh, at one point see, you know, basically since COVID, we've moved to this limited design and to see what areas, you know, visibly right in front of us, what, what areas are getting missed consistently? Because there's certain areas like, um, the Goose Bank. Um, I can't remember, it's, is this going to be two, three years since it's been, uh, surveyed? Which is, you know, it's relatively, used to be a moneymaker, it used to be a profitable, it used to be, um, one of these areas as it seems to be up and down a little bit. And the last time it was surveyed, it was quite a bit down. And so I don't know if that's, um, at the time, I didn't know if that was just a blip or, or what was going on. But, um, yeah, just, if, if possible, could we go back a little further than just, uh, like here in terms of what we've surveyed? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Degree. We can certainly put that together.
Um, okay, so where to from here? I think, um, just see how commissioners were feeling about which way to go. Um, as I indicated, based upon what was in the presentation, we have to the end of the month, not meaning that I want to wait that long, but, um, maybe what we need to do is provide some direction on what we're willing to provide as far as funding goes. And maybe there's some additional work that the Secretariat staff need to do and provide to us based upon that direction. That, um, they can provide some additional updates to make sure that with the graphs showing what would be sampled and what the impacts are, um, so that we are clear about, um, how we would move ahead for 2025. Um, so we identified a, a sum, and I'll put a figure out, call it 1.2 million that we're willing to, uh, manage for 2025 as far as the deficit potential. Um, and based upon that, they can provide us some updated direction if they need more time to do that rather than deciding right now. Anyone? John?
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Um, those, those thoughts make sense to me. Um, I'm, I'm hoping Dave can just clarify to make sure I heard correctly, uh, about the, the state of our reserve funds. So, um, I'll just recap it. You tell me if I got this right. I, I heard you with a reminder that our aspirational goal is 1.5 million in the fist reserve. And I think I heard you say we're at something like 116,000 negative. And our goal is about 2 million in the general reserve. And did I hear you say that we have 3 million currently?
Yeah, thanks, through the chair. So that, that's correct for the fist Fund forty. With the end of FY twenty twenty-four, we are sitting at negative 116,000 dollars. Um, and for Fund fifty, uh, at the start of FY twenty twenty-four, we were just over $2 million. And we are just closing the books. Well, the books are closed and we're just going to tally that up at the moment. And it looks like we'll be approaching a $3 million overall reserve. And so noting that we have an aspirational goal of a $2 million reserve there, that does provide, uh, potentially and tentatively, uh, a million dollars, uh,
surplus in the reserve, for want of a better description. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, thanks for verifying. And then I also wanted to ask you, Dave, about potential for other cost savings in the operations of the Commission. And I'm aware that Andrea has accepted a new position, that there's going to be, you know, at least for a time, some later savings from that position being vacant. Wondering if you've looked at at other potential options here? You know, not not discounting the idea of using the reserve, I think we should. But just recognizing that we continue to have big challenges here in paying for the FIS and wanting to make sure we're considering all of our options.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the question. And through the through the chair, the short answer is is yes. And whatever path we take for the 2025 FIS, my recommendation is to source those funds from 50 Reserve. It's a much cleaner transaction. Noting that any savings that are made within the operational budget for FY 2025 roll into the reserve at the end of that fiscal year. And that's what we've done throughout the course of FY 2024. We've made quite significant budget savings on most of the accounts across the board. And as a function of that, we do have a substantial surplus in revenue that will be moved to Fund 50 as soon as the auditors do their their standard check of all of the accounts. Yeah.
All right, thanks, John. I guess the other comment just before going to you, Bob, is that while this may work for, you know, 2025, I think we still have a longer term issue about how we fund this and what we can do to to provide that funding, but also to look for other ideas on how we would operate the the survey. So I think that's the other part of this that we first off, come to decision on 2025. And second is, we still need to do some more work on the longer term, which also does include, as I think you indicated in this presentation earlier, that both parties are looking to see about additional funding. But we'll see how that plays out over the coming months. Bob?
Yes, Paul, maybe to David, two questions. When I'm looking at the net revenue on here, I'm assuming that the 300,000 plus is already in these negatives. And then that's correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then, Paul, on on the 1.2 alternative, when when would we make a final final on on that decision? I thought I heard something from David or Alan earlier, but I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, if I could, sorry, Chair. And so while in the paper, we were talking about the end of November, it's it's time to ensure that we're able to put out enough tenders, make sure we do the recruitment processes. The supplier of our bait has indicated that they're only going to hold the bait till the middle of November. So we have about two weeks before any additional bait that we may need would be released for a general sale. And so any decision would really need to be made before the middle of November, ideally earlier. But that would be the the cutoff for bait purchases. And then the end of the month, other operational needs would need to be tied up.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, thanks, Bob. Peter?
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Dave, just, I just want to make sure I got this right in my head. Would you would you strictly write, you know, we've reached our aspirational goal within the reserve fund of having a $2 million reserve? Would this be transfers directly into the FIS? And then suddenly we would have this 1 million or whatever the transfer would be in the FIS. So now our FIS reserve is essentially, you know, a million minus the 116,000. And and the idea is that it would probably, you know, be closer to zero by the end of this survey, depending on which option we choose. I'm just trying to get it right in my head, how this transaction works.
Yeah, thank you for the question through the chair. That would be the preferred approach. It's cleaner that way if we are making a lump sum transfer from 50 Reserve into the Fund 40 FIS. Whether that be 1 million or 1.2 million or whatever that's that's going to be. The alternative, of course, is simply to run the FIS. And as we have a deficit that increases, we transfer funds from 50 Reserve to cover that deficit and bring it back to zero. But personally, if I was to suggest a path, it would be for a commission decision to move a specific amount from Fund 50 to Fund 40 for operational needs of the survey.
Yeah, to me, that makes budgetary the most sense in terms of, you know, we're 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 budgeting around these deficits. So, okay, thank you very much.
All right, John?
Yeah, thanks. I belatedly remembered something I wanted to ask about from the paper. The bottom of page two, the paper discusses the potential for reducing costs by subsampling stations in different regions. And I don't think that was touched upon in Alan's presentation. So I wonder if the Secretariat can give us a sense of what's at stake there. The paper didn't go into it in great depth, but indicated that it could have a relatively small effect on CVs and no effect on bias. So that it seems relevant for us to consider that as well.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Crowe. And that's correct. There was a note in the paper that, well, one, these designs are assuming that the entire, that all of the stations in the charter region are surveyed. And a potential cost savings could be to sub sample the stations within a charter region. It would mean, you know, less time spent by the vessel there. It it would be something that we'd have to run through the projection tool because we'd have to really figure out what's the cost of actually just surveying the area versus what's the cost of surveying a certain number of stations out there. So, yeah, it's it's a potential idea, something the Secretariat could run. We'd probably have to wait for Dr. Webster to help out with that one. But what you do risk by a design like that and not serving the entire charter region is a higher variability. You might get a good picture or you might get some picture of what's happening in the charter region, but you wouldn't get as good of a picture. You can think about it as resolution in a photograph, for example. And so you may, the trade off there is, is there a cost savings? Or if you're going to survey that area, if you want to survey that charter region the best way possible?
Excuse me, also, if I can just chime in, that from a purely logistical standpoint, decreasing and just potentially with the idea of randomizing the sample selection then increases potential running time for the vessel, which also may make it less enticing for vessel bids. So just if there's also a good chance of logistical hiccups with just staffing that vessel and finding a vessel willing to do the work when there's reduced work in a given area.
Okay, thanks, you both. That's helpful.
Peter, your hand's up.
Yeah, sorry, just to expand upon that a little bit. I know I've heard from some of the survey vessels that they go into areas that takes them a lot of time, specifically like inlets or various areas in the shallows where they always consistently run into like dogfish or something like that. When you're talking about subsampling, would it have to be randomized? Or could it reduce, you know, for, you know, certain, similar to what we've done with the block design, you know, subsamples within areas? Because I understand zero or, you know, very small numbers are valid scientific numbers, but they're expensive to prosecute. And so I was just curious if that's been considered as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner DeGree. The charter region is really the sampling unit in this context, at least as I understand it. And what you want to do is make sure that you do have a random sample within the sampling unit to represent that entire sampling unit. So if we were to to actually choose stations to remove, that's where bias would be introduced. And we actually, I think we we see this with the captain stations this last year. There's a very similar concept, the, you know, you're choosing where to fish. And I believe the preliminary results showed much higher catch rates of those captains stations or skipper stations, whatever they call them. And it's a significant bias that we do have to be aware of. So I think from a scientific point of view, that would be cautioned against, you know, eliminating stations because they think there are no halibut there because what if halibut do show up there? We would need to know that. From a cost perspective, you know, that's something that might be, you know, considered in a short period of time, just as the skipper captain stations were considered as well.
Okay, just just curious, so just sorry to keep, but you know, if you did it in some sort of almost block design, like you're always looking there every three years instead of like every year, you know, year or or what have you? Or every second year, you know, like if there is some pattern to it, does that help remove some of that bias? Thank you.
Yeah, it 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 could. And it, yeah, it's as you say, it would be just very similar to the block design. We'd have to really think about the design from a smaller what I called a sampling unit than the charter region per se. We'd have like sub-charter regions. And I think Dr. Webster's done some work. Well, no, it's always by charter region that he's been thinking about this. But yeah, it is something that you just want to make sure you're not eliminating, but you are getting out and surveying those areas that you are are temporarily eliminating.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. So where to from here? I think we're kind of reaching the end of our allotted time. I had earlier put out a big potential figure for the Fund 40 for this of having at least 1.2 million. I didn't hear anyone, Commissioner, say no to that, but I wanted to make sure we're on the same page to provide direction to David of where to from here. And I guess a question for your from as well, David. Given we've just seen these options right now, an option so that we would make a decision in a timely manner, and you've indicated no later now than middle of November to make sure we have enough options to get bait. I would, I guess my preference would be to see the presentation cleaned up with these new options distributed so that we make sure that we are making appropriate decision based upon having a review of those other options. And we could do that intercessionally. I think we could, we've done this in the past where we've done it by basically email so that everyone has a chance to review the documents and ask any questions, and then a decision's made. So I guess my proposal is, first off, do we agree upon the number I put out as far as what we have set aside for Fund 40 for the FIS? And second, about the process of coming to a decision so that Secretariat staff can put together the charts based upon with the showing the where the sampling would take place. And that would provide the commissioners an opportunity to review that and see if they have any other questions before coming to decision. And I would recommend that we do that by no later than the end of next week. John?
Thanks, Paul. I concur with all of that. I guess with, I would just put a caveat around the dollar figure that depending on David and his team sharpening their pencils, maybe they're, it's going to come out a little bit different than the 1.2 million. So maybe that we need to be a little bit flexible there. And then on perhaps a separate note, just since we're starting to sum up, we did at the outset mention the opportunity for members of the public to chime in. So just wondering if we want to provide a dedicated opportunity for that.
Yeah, thanks, John. Yes, yes, we, I did say that. And so, yes, we certainly will provide that opportunity to see others. I see one hand up already, but before going to that, any objections from what John just laid out from commissioners? Not seeing anything, so I take that as agreement. David, is there anything else you need from us on the way forward?
No, that's everything we need. I think Chair, we should be able to put together that material relatively quickly, early next week.
All right, great. Now it'll give us an opportunity to review it, and and then you can provide that to commissioners for a decision. So, yes, going to other participants, I see a hand up from Brian de Form.
Brian, you're going to have to try and, we've activated your mic from this end. You're going to have to activate your microphone from your end as well.
Brian, are you there? We're not hearing you, Brian.
While while that's being sorted out, Chair, maybe I could move to the next, which is Lyle.
Yeah, Lyle, go ahead.
Yeah, good morning. Thank you. A little disheartening to to see where the direction of the FIS is kind of heading after a career of doing it, basically. But one question I had, I have two, actually. One, like in DC right now, we're getting heavy, heavy, heavy encounters of sablefish, especially in the deep water areas. Is there any way of retaining any of the sablefish or lingcod that the vessels normally release and try to use some of that revenue? I mean, there is a mortality associated with all the fish we release anyway. So that'd be my first question. And my second question would be, I haven't seen, of course, the data this year, but I understand the reasons for, you know, going into 2B and 2C as hard as you are for the revenue end of things. But there's been a significant price discrepancy, especially around Sitka and 2C compared with what's going on, you know, just south of the border. And I was wondering if there's been any discussions with those buyers or representatives from those areas? Because our experience over the last few years is the vessels and the Commission, quite frankly, have not been very treated very well in the southeast area when it comes to fish sales or even trying to work with the vessels themselves. So, you know, that at times we see a dollar, almost $2 difference between those prices. And when you're pulling out a significant amount of fish out of that area, that is significant revenue that's that's going someplace else. So those are my two questions, and thank you for the presentation.
Through the chair, we could certainly provide just a little bit of context on the sablefish. So I'll pass to the team just to speak to the analysis that was done previously and how how much revenue was going to be generated.
Yeah, so in in discussions for the 2024 FIS, we did do some preliminary review on the idea of retaining sablefish. I know that particularly in Alaska waters, there was some some concerns with catching fish in state waters versus outside of Alaska state waters. And ultimately, our general conclusion was that the revenue received wasn't significant. I don't know if any, anybody else heard anything else, but.
Yeah, I think what I heard was that, you know, I'm sure you are seeing a lot of sablefish in the deep water. I've heard that for sure. But but I have heard that there's not a whole lot caught on the FIS. It just wouldn't add up to a lot, a lot in terms of revenue. I'm getting at your second question, Lyle, about the price discrepancy. Yeah, we had some concern about that last year about the prices, what they were getting. And we did an analysis and took a real good look, you know, really narrowing in on a short time periods. And we found that And we found that there wasn't as much of a price discrepancy as might have been alluded to. So we're not concerned about whether the FIS vessels are getting less than what the commercial vessel would get when they're delivering. We feel that the FIS vessels have been treated fairly. It just may be that the FIS is fishing at times when the prices are generally rolling. Thanks for those two questions and insights.
All right. Thanks, Lyle. Brian, have you been successful in muting your microphone?
If not, Brian, we've just added a chat box on the screen as well. And so if you wanted to type your question as well, thank you.
Thanks, David. Caitlin?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, can hear you fine.
I'm with the Department of Fish and Game. I'm the lead author on our research on rockfish stock assessment. And we are using data from the survey to identify our yelloweye rockfish. And we are interested in figuring out if there's a way that we can contribute some funding to the survey that might be beneficial. So I'm not sure what is the appropriate form to talk about that, but I wanted to raise that possibility. This survey is very important for our work as well.
Great, thanks, Caitlin. I had a little hard time hearing you. I don't know if it's any better on your end, Dave?
No, unfortunately, it wasn't. It was about yelloweye rockfish, but I'm not sure.
I can, I can, I heard a little bit of it. And Caitlin, I'm happy to talk to you about the potential of using FIS with yelloweye. In fact, I'm scheduled to talk to Jan Rumble in November sometime about the use of our FIS for yelloweye. And I've talked to Phil Joy in the past. If, and I'm sorry, it was a little difficult to hear you. But if you want to reach out directly to me, I'm happy to follow up with you. But I think what I might say, and I don't know if you're getting at this, Caitlin, is that this is the part of the FIS that is useful to others, the collaboration part of it. And FIS is actually used by other agencies, whether that's Pacific Cod, yelloweye. It's one of the very important sources of information for yelloweye in different areas, including, I believe, some areas two A. So, and as I understand it, Alaska Fishing Game is currently looking at doing the yelloweye stock assessment and is looking how they can use the IPHC FIS observations of yelloweye to get a better estimate in that stock assessment. Is that characterizing what you said, Caitlin? Is there anything else you wanted to make sure got across to the commissioners?
Alan, I see in the chat that Caitlin has also added, "Sounds good." What I was saying is that ADF and G is interested in exploring how we might help with some funding for the survey.
That's out of my wheelhouse.
Fair enough, Alan. But so, yes, maybe we'll be able to follow up on that later as well. But you'll do, in the meantime, Alan, you'll speak with Caitlin.
Sure, sure, happy to.
And then, David, there's a message from Brian as well. He says, "Thanks. I was just curious what the going rate you have been paying for bait."
Yes, we received two bids on providing preseason, excuse me, preseason bait for the FIS at a dollar eighty or a dollar ninety a pound, depending on the supplier for chop salmon.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands up. Oh, hang on, Corey. Go ahead, Corey.
Microphone check?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Thank you. I was just wondering if you could clarify what the barriers to industry contributing eventually to the funding of the survey? I partially heard the reasoning, but wasn't quite seeing why reduced bids would be okay, but direct funding would not be.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And so the direct funding is just that potential conflict of interest. And within our regulations, we're not able to receive anything above twenty dollars from anyone involved with the Pacific Halibut industry. The caveat to that, or the nuance to that, is if we go out through for a request for tender process on vessel bids, we evaluate those tenders based on a number of factors, including price. And if there was a discounted bid, it would potentially be viable to take that into consideration. If it was seen as a potential conflict of interest, it's something we would just evaluate through that tender process. And I know that's, there's a nuanced approach to be had there. But the short answer is we can't receive a direct cash influx from industry. But if there are these kinds of discounted contributions through vessel bids, that's something that at the moment we're able to look at.
All right. Thanks, David. Oh, Lyle's asking if that price was delivered and stored or just the purchase?
Yes, thank you. So that price provides preseason storage. So until June or July, I believe, so a couple of months into the FIS, but does not provide any delivery of the bait. Both suppliers are based out of Washington. And then any sort of shipping or storage within the ports would be additional charges that we factored into our mailing and shipping and other budget lines.
All right. I don't see any other hands up or anything in the chat. So, Dave, I heard you said that you would have something to commissioners early next week. There's nothing else from anyone, any other commissioners? I think we are done for this morning. Anything on your end, Dave?
No, that's everything. Thank you very much. Noting that this is a special session, there will be a very brief summary report that I will send to the six commissioners for review and endorsement intercessionally. And then, as you said, we'll move to an intercessional decision-making post-process via correspondence for the final decision. Thanks, Chair.
All right. Thanks very much, everyone, for all the questions, comments, and the presentation from staff. That was very helpful.
Thank you.
Bye for now.
Thanks, all.
Thank you, everyone.